The meeting of the school committee for March 15th will come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Abaze?
Yeah.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yeah.
May Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. La Monica?
Yeah.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Panerisi?
Here.
Ms. Sarny? Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Dinah Lewis?
Here.
We have eight members present and one ex officio. We have a quorum. Please all rise and salute the flag.
Lienць to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Superintendent, Roman numeral number three, please.
Thank you Chairman Parker and good evening to everyone present here and all of you who are watching at home. And a special welcome to Dinah Lewis, our student representative. Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from March 1st, 2021.
I'll move to wave the record and place it on the file.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is made and seconded to wave the reading. Have it placed on file and seconded. Roll call, please. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarny? Mr. Parker?
Yes. Eight in affirmative, you have placed on, accepted and placed on file. Roman, sorry, Madam Superintendent, next item is this?
Sure, Roman numeral four is public comment.
I'll make a motion to open public comment.
Well, second.
Motion made and seconded to open up for public comment. Can a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Eight in front of, we have opened up for a public comment.
So we have one person in the rating room. I'm gonna admit them now.
Okay, so if I could just explain, there's been a change in how we're gonna handle public comment. You know, our attempts to use the call-in method didn't work that well. So now what we're doing is we're inviting the speakers in to join us via Zoom. So we can... Hi, welcome, Mr. Daley.
Good evening, Mr. Parker. Good evening, members of the committee. Thank you for having me before you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in public comment. The reason why I'm calling in is just some concerns regarding the superintendent's presentation at the March 1st meeting. As a longtime employee of the Everett Public Schools, as a longtime resident of the city of Everett, as the husband of a elementary teacher, I just had some concerns regarding the reopening plan presented by the superintendent. At one point, there was a segment of the report in which the superintendent pulled out some of the demographic material, and I believe, and I'm just paraphrasing, spoke that she was speaking for the people of color in the community and advocating for the children of Everett. Just as a resident, as a longtime employee, former employee, I just wanted to really, maybe the superintendent threw you through the chair, that the superintendent could amplify or clarify that comment. Because to the viewing audience, it just appeared as if the comment was meant, or could be insinuated to say that the teachers in the city don't advocate for children. And I'm sure that that's not the case, but I'd really like to hear some clarification on that. You know, just one of the hallmarks of living in this community, of working in this community for as long as I did, was that teachers in this community, city government, always, the hallmark of Everett has always been that kids got what they needed. Whether it's the textbooks, whether it's the cleats, you know, to play on turf for the Super Bowl, whether it's what have you, whatever it might be. But that we have always found a way to get kids and give kids what they need. And I think that's evidenced by the lack of user fees, by the lack of fees in general for a lot of the activities that our kids could continue to participate in. And so that comment really kind of troubled me as a resident, as a voter, as a former employee of the district. And that's really my main concern. And it just seemed so out of place with the rest of the presentation, the reopening plan, that the superintendent, up to that point, had been presenting to the community. So that's really why I'm calling, and that's really my concern. Because for many people that viewed this meeting, and I believe there were over 400, it could be insinuated that teachers aren't advocating for kids. And I know that, having worked here and living here, I know that that is simply not the case. Because our teachers, working in another district, as I do now, I can tell you for a fact, that teachers in this community give kids an education that they are not receiving in other communities. And we should be thankful for that. And we should hold up our teachers and appreciate them and applaud them. Because they are giving, in many cases, a private school education to our public school students. And I just would really like to hear some clarification on what the superintendent meant by those comments. And I really just, you know, I just took umbrage to that. Because that is not the mission of this district, and that's not what our people do. And those comments don't reflect that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Daley. For the record, your address, please.
For the record, I am still at Maplewood Office Department.
Okay. So this is a public comment period. It's not by rules set up to be a question and answer period. So we do appreciate your time tonight.
As well, I understand. I'm just making my, I'm just making my concern felt.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Two. Any other, any other guests?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to close public comment?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to close public comment. Can have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Eight in affirmative, zero on the negative, we have closed public comment.
Sorry, for some reason I can't...
All right, thank you for that. If I could, well over a year and a half ago, this body accepted a national law allowing us to have a student representative to join us in an ex officio capacity. That person that's joining us moving forward is Dinah Lewis. In this role, she can ask questions, she can debate, she just won't have the opportunity to vote. And we will build this program around the Student Advisory Council's request through the Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity Committee. So Dinah, welcome, welcome aboard. If you wanted to introduce yourself, say a few words, now's your opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chair for the floor. My name is Dinah Lewis, and I'm a sophomore at Everett High School. And I'm here on behalf of the Everett Student Advisory Council. We want to first ensure that all opportunities presented are accessible to each and every student. We want to amplify that the student voice is, you know, promoting equity so that it can be seen and felt within our school community. We desire to see and make effective change as we diligently advocate for the unseen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, and again, welcome aboard. And we look forward to working with you and the students that you represent. Roman number five, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you so much. Roman number five is the report of the superintendent. And we're gonna start, the first item is the superintendent's update. Okay, so as we gather here tonight, we are firmly pointed towards a return to in-person teaching and learning, which we're very excited about. Our students in substantially separate classes will be returning on March 29th, followed by K-5 students on April 5th. And finally, we are aiming for our middle schoolers to join us on April 26th. School leaders and teachers have started to distribute our learning choice form with families via email and ClassDojo. So this document, at this point, is for K-5 families only. And it gives them the chance to let us know if their elementary student is going to be attending school full-time, five days per week in person, or if your student will be remaining in remote learning five days per week. If you have not received the learning choice form from your school, please contact your building principal or assistant principal, and one will definitely be made available to you. For students in our substantially separate classrooms, you will be contacted directly about your choice. And then, as we move into our next phases, we'll be communicating with middle school families and high school families. I also wanted to just take a brief moment to clarify the messaging from DESI regarding the mandated return to school by Monday, April 5th. I wanted to just remind families that the state's school reopening directive applies to districts, not to families. So DESI has been clear from the start that another one of their mandates is that districts must follow, is to allow students to remain in remote education for the remainder of the school year if they so choose. And that has not changed. And I think many families may be hearing mandated return and believe that that means that their students are mandated to return. And so I just wanted to make that distinction, that is not the case. It is not the families, but our school districts that are required to return by April 5th. And this is the question we've been receiving most frequently, so I wanted to address it. In addition, there are two important safety considerations that we wanted to make everybody aware of. First, all students who attend in-person classes will be wearing face coverings, no matter what their grade level. Two, which we discussed at length during our last meeting, we will be using the state-approved three-feet minimum of physical distancing to help us configure our classrooms and to accommodate every student who wants to return for in-person learning. While six feet is certainly preferable, and it's what we're going to be striving towards, we just want to make sure that families are aware that we are going to be abiding by the three-foot minimum. We will talk more today about the initial data from the learning choice form. But I wanted to actually start tonight's presentation by announcing the winners of last month's Black History Month contests. So to quickly recap, we sponsored three different contests. One for students in grades K through 5, one at the middle school level, and one for Everett High School. We received 47 entries from our youngest students, 121 from grades 6 to 8, and 66 from our high schoolers. So for the level K-5, we held an art contest in which students designed colorful posters that illustrated what Black History Month means to them. Our first-place winner is Giovanni Namie, a first grader at the Parlin School. Giovanni's creation, which you can see on the slide here at the left, is a fantastic mix of, you know, personal history, artistic flair, and also it had academic research in it as well. And the three-fold design was especially effective. Our judges were very impressed by this. Lafayette School's second grader Natalia Mareo earned second-place honors, and her submission featured a family tree design as a celebration of who Natalia calls "the brave people who made a change in America." And in third place was a Webster School third grader Maria Clara Matas, who created a visual that draws a link between the core values of Black History Month and the added challenges we are experiencing during the pandemic. So that was really amazing to see. For our middle school students, we asked participants to write an essay answering the question, "Is there an individual who inspires you for Black History Month?" Jalisa Hanley, a Parlin School seventh grader, submitted the winning essay. It was a powerful reflection on the immense, but sometimes overlooked efforts of civil rights and women's rights activist Dorothy Irene Height. And you can see a quote from her essay on this slide. In second place is English School seventh grader Annea Jean Baptiste, who wrote about poet Amanda Gorman, who is the youngest inaugural poet in the history of our country. And, you know, I think we've all seen Amanda's poems several different times, I know I have. And it was called "The Hill We Climb," and it was on the day that Joe Biden was sworn in as president. So that was a really amazing essay that she wrote. The third-place winner is Caverion School's seventh grader Jeremy Whitlow, who wrote about his admiration for the influential contemporary author Jason Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds' most recent work, Stamped: Racism, Anti-Racism, and You, serves as a very informative and powerful way to start conversations about these critical subjects. And I know that it's been a book that's been used by our staff at the Caverion. For our high school students, we provided three quotes around which students could construct an essay. The winning submission was written by junior Sean Sheek. He wrote his essay in response to the short and powerful directive by politician, educator, and author Shirley Chisholm that says, "If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair." Specifically, Sean wrote about how this advice is especially useful for teenagers whose voice might be dismissed as being inexperienced. And so there's a quote from his essay on the right. Junior Alyssa Hurley earned second-place honors for her essay discussing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s sentiments that "we must balance the power of forgiveness with the dangers of forgetting." And Tommy Cubus earned third-place honors, writing about that same quote by Dr. King. And Tommy penned a deeply personal essay on family, forgiveness, and cherishing the people who love and support us. So all winners received gift cards for their achievements. I do want to thank Addie Celestin, a member of our central office team, for organizing our district-wide Black History Month efforts. We look forward to making them a yearly tradition. I also wanted to thank our teachers for promoting the contests. A seventh and eighth-grade teacher at the Whittier remarked that her students were very eager to extend their learning on the many Black American individuals and important historical movements in the ongoing fight for racial justice and equality that we've studied throughout this year. And she was very excited that the essay contest provided them with a broader outreach and potential community awareness. Finally, I wanted to thank the individuals who helped judge the submissions, which included Addie Celestin, Cory McCarthy, Frances Canty, Jane Goodman, Letitia Faison, Sasha Walls, Steve August, Stanley Chamberlain, Jonah Hooks, Jada Simone Ononime, Ononime, sorry, Claudia Saint Just, Shalonda Irish, and Christine Alphonse. We also have exciting news to share with our EHS 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. The district is offering a comprehensive tutoring program from the leading college provider Livius. So this is being provided to our students at no cost. It was founded in 1984, Livius was, and it offers a combination of time-tested methodologies, proprietary strategies that they've created, a very expert curriculum, and rigorously-trained tutors who can boost the student achievement. So the program will run every week from March 22nd through June 11th, with the exception of April vacation. Students will meet for two 45-minute sessions per week in groups of no more than five students. So schedules will be emailed to students later this week. In advance of the live tutoring sessions, our students have taken reading and math assessments to pinpoint what type of help and instruction they may need. So the assessments were 40 minutes, 20 minutes for reading, 20 minutes for math. And the program will conclude with a live proctored assessment on June 12th. Ninth graders will be taking partner program called the Two Sigma Academic Program. This academic immersion program is designed to close gaps in student learning, regardless of the instructional model they have been in during the 2020-2021 school year. The 10th-grade program focuses on college readiness, while our juniors will be exposed to high-quality SAT and ACT test prep. Livius has a very long track record of generating results, and in the 35 years that it has been established, it has helped students boost their SAT scores by an average of 225 points and ACT scores by an average of six points. So I also wanted to congratulate our family liaison Sarah Paiva, Erica Green, and Felicia Barbosa for completing the interpreter and translator in education training workshop series at UMass Amherst. So this intense workshop series was created by the Translation Center at UMass Amherst for the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and it was offered to us free of charge. So this series provided an educational and professional setting in which our participants could learn about the standards and procedures of interpreting and translating in a school setting. The program offered them an opportunity to practice and develop their translation and interpreting skills, to consider and reflect on specific situations, and to also build a network of colleagues. So the workshops will raise the already impressive capacity of our family liaisons, who have just been invaluable this year. And we have three additional family liaisons enrolled in the program right now. And eventually, we hope to have all of our family liaisons complete this fantastic program, which again amplifies the essential role that they play in helping us fulfill our core values and mission. So today marks the third week that more than 50 of our English learners are in school for full-time instruction four days a week at the Lafayette, Whittier, and Parlin. Of this group, many are experiencing their first classroom experiences as students in the United States, and not just Everett. Feedback from the teachers who volunteered to come back and lead these classes has been really, really positive. Student behavior has been described as exceptional, and everybody has been really diligent in wearing their face coverings and practicing social distancing, physical distancing. So these photos on this slide feature thank you cards from students in Katherine Kokova's class. So Ms. Kokova also sent us a fantastic video of her students singing to Witten staff when they bring lunch to the classroom. And she wrote in her email, "It makes me so happy to see them happy." I had the pleasure of reading to two of our classes during Read Across America Week, and it really was just a joy to be able to see classes full of students who are engaging with their teachers and schoolwork. And it makes me that much more excited about bringing back our students very soon. I did want to remind our families that the Parent Information Center will begin registering students in pre-K3, pre-K4, kindergarten, and first grade on Monday, May 3rd. Beginning on Monday, April 19th, families can actually visit the PIC page on the EPS website and use our multilingual appointment booking tool to easily reserve a registration time slot. I do want to remind families to please make sure they make an appointment, as we are still not allowing walk-in registrations at this time in order to, again, maintain the flow of families in and out. The enrollment period for students in grades 2 through 12 begins on Tuesday, June 1st, so you can begin to secure appointments online beginning on Thursday, May 18th. So if anyone has a K-12 student, or who knows somebody who has a K-12 student who will be joining the EPS next year, we do encourage you to please make an appointment as soon as you can. No need to wait until August. Our family liaisons are also available to help families that need support with the registration process. And I'm also pleased to announce that this year we will offer free morning and afternoon pre-K sessions, five days per week, in the school year 2021-2022. So we have developed a robust schedule of professional development for our teachers as they're preparing for returning to class for in-time, in-person teaching and learning. The courses are self-paced. They cover a wide range of topics and technology related to this unprecedented school year. We are using the same application that we actually use for our summer institute, and it's called SCED. And it's where we're organizing and housing our PD to make it easily accessible for teachers to complete remotely. So the lineup of sessions will help our staff use the technology, software, platforms we will use to connect students, learning in classrooms and at home. They range from, you know, very practical, like how to set up a cellphone for mobile Zoom control, to more in-depth tutorials on programs such as Mystery Science and Gamification. So the resources will help teachers leverage platforms to make their lessons interactive using document cameras, microphones, and our many content presentation products such as Peridot, Kahoot, and EdPuzzle. We also included a webinar on trauma-informed teaching from our counseling provider Elliot to help prepare teachers meet the social-emotional needs of students. And we've included an optional mental health series from the Cambridge Health Alliance. So we do want to thank our amazing partners for supporting us by providing these resources. I also wanted to, once again, thank our amazing virtual learning leaders who've been playing a lead role in curating these practical, teacher-centered, professional development sessions. As always, we look forward to hearing from our staff about the session so that we can continue to bolster our efforts to offer the highest-quality PD and to improve our PD over time. So this slide is a follow-up to a program we first introduced you to in early February. It's called the High School Senior Internship and Education Program, or HSSIEP. The paid internship is being offered to 20 Everett High School students through DESI, a connecting activities initiative that they have, and the Commonwealth's Corporation's Youth Works Program. It's supported by Commonwealth 16 Regional Mass Hire Workforce Boards. So our interns will be assigned to all of our elementary schools and the Devon School. They're gonna be starting Monday, April 5th, and they can work up to 100 hours during the rest of the school year, which means that they might have an opportunity to help our teachers on, close to a full-time basis, after their 12th grade academic year comes to an end. So our congratulations to these students for being selected and taking part of this invaluable opportunity to work with our dedicated EPS educators. Of the 20 interns, two each will be assigned to the Devens, Parlin, Webster, and Whittier, and three interns will be at the Matty English, four at the Lafayette, and five at the Caverion. For our students, the internship will expose them to classroom experiences while helping them build and hone their interpersonal communication, listening, and time-management skills. Connecting Activities is a DESI initiative that leverages a statewide infrastructure to support college and career readiness for all students. And Commonwealth Corporation's Youth Work is a workforce development agency that strengthens the skills of Massachusetts residents through innovative partnerships. Finally, the Mass Hire Workforce Boards are entrusted to help develop the strategies that guide the Commonwealth's efforts in ensuring workers develop skills that are aligned with state education policies and economic development goals. So we are really thrilled to be entering into a program that is guided by and established by such proven organizations such as these. So our attendance rates continue to hold firm. As of the 109th day of school, 5,522 students have an attendance rate between 90 and 100%. Our daily attendance average has climbed to more than 95% over the last two months. An additional 1,167 students have longed on for e-education between 60 to 89% of the time. And, you know, of the countless things for which our teachers and school leaders deserve immense credit, their persistence in doing everything that they can to connect their students to e-education is definitely near the top of that list. So without their diligence, you know, we would not have been able to enjoy such a prolonged and consistent level of success in our attendance. In recent weeks, daily confirmed COVID cases in Everett range from the single digits to the low 20s. So the yellow line shows continued downward trend, while the green line indicates that cases do fluctuate at a relatively low level at this point. But especially when you compare them to the post-holiday period in January. And for now, the third week in a row Everett is being categorized by the state as being in the yellow or moderate risk category. As of last Thursday, our daily incident rate saw a very slight increase, which again just reminds us that we must follow our mitigation practices as we continue to drive down our numbers. But again, we're very excited to be in the yellow category yet again this week. So Commissioner Jeff Riley and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education did release further mandatory in-person learning guidance last week. So now, you know, we're kind of trying to get a full idea of what, what everything's going to look like. And I do again commend EPS for being able to pivot quickly as news and updates have been released. So we have discussed already the first major component of the DESI requirements. That is the April fifth start date for K to five students. The latest news does involve middle school grades, which DESI would like for us to begin by Wednesday, April twenty-eighth. Like K to five, the opening would be on a full-time basis, five days per week. I do believe we are in a strong position to meet the school. All of our buildings will be opened on April fifth, which will give us a chance to, you know, fully assess and refine any operations before we bring back our middle schoolers. A separate learning choice form again will be distributed to families with students in grades six, seven, and eight when we get closer to that time period. What is still to be, to be determined is the high school level. So DESI has stated that they will make an announcement in April, at which time districts will be given at least two weeks' notice of when the start date is. We however, would like to go ahead and make return plans that best support our community rather than waiting for DESI guidance. So we will be working with the Everett Teachers Association to solidify that date sooner rather than later. So we're going, just to cycle back to something we've already talked about, which is our decision to follow the state's guidance on physical distancing by setting a minimum of three feet in instances where it facilitates our reopening. So again, we'll follow the six-feet standard as much as we can, including in hallways and in areas where students gather for arrival and dismissal. I do understand if the new guidance is giving anyone pause, which is why we wanted to take some time to talk about it a little bit, because the six-foot benchmark has, you know, become so ingrained in us over the past year that it is hard to make that shift over to three feet. And so our decision really was not reached until we felt that we had a strong enough recommendation from medical experts. So this slide sort of summarizes the results of a four-month study of two hundred and fifty-one eligible districts with different physical distancing requirements. The districts in the study represented more than five hundred and thirty thousand students and more than ninety-nine thousand staff. So the findings of the study were published in the journal entitled Clinical Infectious Diseases. And the findings did show that cases among school staff in districts with three feet versus six feet of physical distancing were similar. Cases among students were also similar. So the conclusion is that lower spacing policies can definitely be adopted with face covering requirements without negatively impacting student or staff safety. I also want to reiterate that late last month, a group of three hundred physicians, public health experts, and infectious disease specialists signed a letter informing state education leaders that three feet is an acceptable standard in schools. So here is the district's completed and final in-person schedule for the first major part of our reopen, reopening. And this slide includes two significant updates for families to note. One, our schools and e-learning centers will be closed on Monday, March twenty-second. So on that date, students will not be logging on for remote learning and students will not be coming into e-learning centers. So it will essentially be a no-school day. We will use this day for classroom setup and professional development for our educators and staff. We'll also have extra personnel available on that date to help teachers solve any technical issues they may encounter. So again, there will be no school on, a week from today. The second is that we will be closing our e-learning centers at the end of the day on Thursday, April first. So that will be the last date that our e-learning centers are running. Starting on Friday, February, April second, which is already a regularly scheduled holiday on our calendar, our e-learning centers will be closed for all students, even those who opt to continue with e-education. And then again, like I've mentioned, on Monday, March twenty-ninth, students in substantially separate classrooms in all grade levels will return to school for in-person teaching and learning. That's pre-K through twelve. Again, families will be contacted by our special education department to confirm whether they want to come back to school or whether they prefer to stay with remote learning. Students in kindergarten through five who choose to attend full-time, full-day in-person will return on Monday, April fifth. And again, students have to fill out the, or families need to fill out the learning choice form we talked about earlier in order to secure their place in those classrooms. So we do ask that families complete it as soon as possible, even if they're stating that they would again prefer to stay in e-education. If you have not yet received it yet, please reach out to your school principal or your teacher. And I just want to thank the Everett Teachers Association, the members of this committee, and my administration for working so hard to hammer out this schedule. I think it helps us keep on track to fulfill the state's mandate and helps us get our students back into school. So as I've mentioned, the EPS is in the process of finding out just how many of our K to five families are going to return for full-time in-person instruction and how many will remain in remote education. I stress that this is an ongoing process as these have just been put out. Families still have time to fill out the learning choice form that was shared last week. And again, if you haven't received it, please reach out to your school. But as of early this afternoon, we had received responses from about fifty-nine percent of our K to five families. So, you know, this is a good place to start as we try to see what we're going to be looking at. And also since we only distributed the form last week. So of the respondents, respondents we tallied so far across all grade levels at all our K to five schools, sixty-six percent are going to return to school, while thirty-four percent will continue to use e-education. The total numbers are one thousand one hundred and thirty-two for in-person and five hundred and seventy-nine for remote. Again, we are still waiting to hear from about one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven families. So again, the data that we're sharing tonight is just a snapshot into what we think we may see. You know, we're, we're not very surprised by these numbers. You know, we had seen similar numbers when we were looking at hybrids. So it's not surprising that we would see this when we're thinking about full in-person. And I think the important thing to remember for all families is that they cannot make a wrong decision here. We are prepared to welcome back as many students as possible, but we totally understand why families would want to, why may prefer to stay with e-education. And again, we respect that that is a family decision. Our first look at the data also reveals pretty consistent percentages among our schools and among our grade levels. So of those who've completed the form so far, we've seen a preference for in-person classes in every grade K through five and in every school. So again, our school leaders will be continuing their outreach efforts this week, and we are confident that we'll be able to hear from all of our families by next week. As always, you know, in looking at everything from an equity lens, we did make this form available in English, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, and Spanish. So again, the breakdown of the results shows that in-person learning is proving popular amongst all of our families at this point. Of the individuals who responded in English, the breakdown is sixty-four to thirty-six percent in favor of in-person. The breakdown is sixty-three, thirty-seven among our Spanish-speaking families, seventy-seven, twenty-three from our Portuguese-speaking families, and eighty-five, fifteen among the Haitian Creole-speaking families who submitted the form already. And of the people who have filled out the form so far, sixty-three percent have said that they will be participating in voluntary COVID testing when we return for in-person teaching and learning. That's another one of the questions on the learning choice form. So our school leaders will be sharing information about our testing programs before our start date. And we do hope that this will encourage a greater percentage of our families even to opt into our testing initiatives. But again, that is up to every family. And finally, to wrap up the presentation, I wanted to share some exciting news. We're very thrilled to announce that we completed our first vaccination clinic for EPS teachers and staff on Thursday and Friday of last week, March eleventh and twelfth. This clinic was made possible with support of Mayor Di Maria and his team and the dedicated health professionals at the CHA. In particular, I wanted to thank Christian Lambeer of the CHA for helping us to organize this so quickly for our staff. So the clinic allowed for three hundred and thirty-five EPS employees to receive the single-dose Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine at CHA's Vaccination Center in Somerville. Our original plan was to prioritize vaccines for those individuals who have returned to school buildings as well as those who are central to our first phase of in-person reopening. But the CHA was actually able to provide us with extra vaccines so that we could extend the opportunity to every employee. So as a result, we were able to send out the opportunity to all of our nine hundred-plus employees. Three hundred and thirty-five responded yes to the opportunity and all three hundred and thirty-five were able to receive the vaccine. So needless to say, this was a really incredible success, especially when we consider how uncertain we were about the vaccine just two weeks ago or even a week ago. A lot of our employees who did turn down the chance to participate in the CHA clinic did so because they've already received their first dose of the Moderna or Pfizer vaccine or were scheduled to already. In addition, the state has started accepting appointments for teachers and school staff last week for its regional locations. So I think all of this indicates that the large majority of our staff who want to get the vaccine will have received it by the time school opens at the end of March and early April. So at the vaccine clinics, the CHA provided everyone with the vaccination report card, record card. They were automatically logged into the mass immunization system. And those who received the vaccine were also provided easy access to VSafe, which is a smartphone-based health checker to privately tell the CDC about any side effects, as this is information that they're gathering. And all of the feedback we received is that it was a very seamless, CHA made it a really smooth and positive experience. You know, we've been advocating for our teachers to receive the vaccine ever since it hit the market. You know, we began planning our in-person with the sincerest hope that we could link our reopening to EPS-only vaccine clinics. And again, we know that that was tabled by the state, but we are very appreciative of the continued advocacy from everyone here, from our stakeholders, our mayor. And we were excited that we were able to vaccinate employees and generate, you know, this momentum for our return to school on March twenty-ninth, April fifth, and beyond. So thank you for your time and patience, and I'll take any questions.
Yeah, Ms. Murray, and Ms. Lambert, and then Ms. Barrows.
Thank you through you to the superintendent. I just had two questions, and if we don't have answers for them right now, that's fine. But just questions that I'm wondering about. I have had a few pre-K parents reach out to me asking me when we're bringing back pre-K. So I said that I would bring it up at the meeting. So if we know that, that would be helpful. And then my second question is with the survey. Every educator knows that there's always the outlier families that are difficult to get to do the paperwork. If I'm going to be honest, I'm one of those difficult families who doesn't like to do paperwork. So my question is, if a child's family does not fill out the paperwork, do we know yet if they are going to default to remote or default to in-person? Or is that something you don't want to discuss tonight until we see what our, our turnaround is?
Thank you. Yes, so those are both very good questions. So for pre-kindergarten, for our pre-kindergarten substantially separate classrooms, those will start on March twenty-ninth. For our other pre-kindergarten classrooms, those will start on the same day as our middle school, April twenty-sixth. That's what we're shooting for. Again, we're still in discussions to solidify that date with the ETA, but that is our anticipated date. As for, you know, the default, you know, I think we're trying to make preparations either way as we also anticipate. You know, we want to be prepared if students arrive and don't have a form. So we are actually making plans either way to make sure that we are, that we're prepared. However, even before that, in order to proactively get us so that we don't reach that point, we are trying to do a lot of outreach to make sure that we hear from every family that's on our roster.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the superintendent. Just quick, two quick questions. One is if families have questions about what the school will look like, what the school day will look like, should they reach out to their parent liaisons or is there another resource you recommend?
So we've started to, and, and I believe in the learning choice form, we linked some resources. We do have FAQs that are up on our website in multiple languages. I would say to reach out to either a family liaison or your teacher or school principal. The principals, you know, definitely, because again, every school is very different. So there are going to be different, you know, nuances for each school. So I think that they may be the best person to reach out to if they want to know what the school-wide plan is going to look like. So they will be similar overall, but there will definitely be changes school to school.
And then just my second question. We're all very excited to have two varsity games going on today and sports is going on. We have a home hockey game tomorrow. So it just, there, there was some questions and concerns about the spectator policy and if there's any plans for that to change and how it differs city to city. And so I was just hoping you could add some clarity to that for our families.
Absolutely. So the spectator policies are basically city to city and are based on, you know, the home city's plans and circumstances. So for example, here in Everett, we are unfortunately not allowing spectators at this point. However, if you go to other cities, they may be allowing spectators. Now, other cities may also be allowing spectators only of their families at this point. So every city has worked with their local Department of Public Health to determine what their plan is right now. And we do believe that those plans are going to change over time as we're able to sort of relax the, you know, the restrictions and, and loosen, you know, we'll loosen those restrictions to be able to provide more access. So because Everett, again, we've, you know, for example, Medford, they have had lower numbers than us for a significant period of time. So I think they felt more comfortable starting and allowing their families to, to have a family member in. Unfortunately for us, as we all know, we actually even had put a stop to our sports where we worked with the local Department of Public Health and we decided to take a pause. We were unsure we could start when everybody else was starting because of our numbers at that time. That has since changed, but again, we do want to start conservatively. Again, start slow to, to move fast. So we do hope that we'll be able to loosen those restrictions. And, you know, the, the cities do meet the different coaches, and so there will be ongoing conversations too, because as the, the seasons have started and these questions are happening more, you know, we do want to work with everybody to try to make sure it's an equitable system overall. So there will be some discussions happening too amongst the different cities to try to see that we can get to some equal ground. But that all being said, we are live streaming our, our home games on the EHS Athletics website. Our coverage began with today's varsity basketball doubleheader between EHS and Revere. So we do hope to be able to provide live stream broadcasting until we're able to make sure that we can provide access to everybody who wants to attend the games.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Superintendent, my question is more regarding the registration for next school year. You mentioned about the link to, on our website that is, parents can book an appointment. Is it possible to call the Parent Information Center if you can't have access to a computer to book it online?
So yes, actually, we will have numbers to of our family liaisons linked so that if, you know, families need to call and don't want to just call a main number, but need to speak with somebody who speaks their native language, we'll make sure that we have that accessible right on, linked on to that page so that if they would like to call, if they feel more comfortable doing so, that they can do that, or they can call the main PIC number.
And the family liaison can book it for them?
Yeah, or support them with booking.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions to the superintendent? I don't see any further hands. Thank you.
All right. I hope, oh, I did have one final thing to add that I forgot to mention, Ms. Lambert. We are also trying to plan your, plan senior nights. So this has just come to So this has just come to our attention. The coaches are trying to plan this for end of March and April for, you know, hockey and basketball. We actually just started to put these plans together, so we didn't have the ability to bring them before you tonight to approve them, but we will be trying to communicate with you in the meanwhile, in order to approve them. That's the, another way we want to be able to try and provide more access to our families here. So I will move on to item number two.
Item two.
Okay, so before actually I move on, I would like to vote, request to vote to take item number two and three collectively. And invite Mr. Obremsky to provide information regarding both the foster care policy and the homeless policy.
So move second.
Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded to invite Mr. Obremsky for us. If I can just get a show of thumbs up. Okay, yeah, welcome, Mr. Obremsky.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Just going to share my screen to make sure everybody has it. Can you see that on the screen? Can everyone see that?
No.
Okay, okay. How about now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm here this evening to present a foster care policy to the Everett Public Schools. And as you know, many of you know that have been here for a number of years, in two thousand and fifteen, we created a homeless policy. And as part of that homeless policy, we also took care of the foster care children under that policy. Now, by D E S I guidelines, we should have our own separate foster care policy. So by creating this foster care policy, it also requires us as the third piece on the item to amend the homeless policy. So in your packet on Friday that you received from Ms. Celestion, I did put in a copy of the proposed foster care policy. And just for the people at home, in the audience at home watching, I'd like to give a brief description of what the foster care policy entails. Even though you people received the full policy, this is a brief description. So the purpose of the foster care policy is that children that are in foster care or students in foster have the same equal access to a free, appropriate public education. The district has to, the superintendent has to designate someone to be in charge of this role. And the superintendent, at this point, had designated myself, Charles Obremsky, to be the liaison for the foster care policy. The foster care policy has an enrollment process. It's the immediate enrollment of foster care students in schools. The right to remain in the school of origin unless it is determined not to be in the best interest of the student. And the right to remain in the school of origin for the duration of the student's time in foster care or until the student completes all grades in that school. Transportation. Some students will need transportation to remain in their school of origin. The Everett Public Schools will collaborate with the Department of Children and Families, known to most of us as D C F, to implement how transportation will be provided. Access to comparable services. Foster care students are to be provided services and education programs comparable to those received by other students. Access to preschool. Foster care preschoolers have the same opportunities to enroll and attend and succeed in preschool as non-foster care students. And if there is the dispute, there is a dispute resolution process. When D C F and the school district cannot agree about whether it is in the student's best interest to remain in the school of origin or to enroll and attend locally. And D C F makes a decision that the district cannot accept, the party can seek a review of D C F's decision by utilizing the foster care selection dispute resolution process. Just so you are aware, last school year, we had thirty-four students that were in foster care. And we spent sixty-one thousand dollars transporting those students. Not all students required transportation, but we had thirty-four students last year. And we spent about sixty-one thousand transporting those students. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the foster care policy before I go on to the homeless policy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Obremsky. I just wanted to clarify how students are referred to you as liaison. Is it through D C F only or through the parent information center and family liaisons?
Most of them comes from the D C F social workers in the area. And we have what we call bid meetings, best interest determination meetings. If the student should go to school where they reside or in some cases, because some students are still remote. This year, they've opted to remain in the other community because they're used to the teacher and then we'll make another determination in the summer. I've had two or three, what would they call bid or best interest determination meetings last week, and I have two scheduled for this week. So there hasn't been a lot up until this point, but now the districts are starting to get back to in-person learning. There's going to be more of these type of meetings happening, but mostly with Department of Children and Families, social workers, advocates, the foster care family. Usually a group, the guidance councils in the schools who seem to know the students the best. We have a group meeting together over Zoom to determine what's in the best interest of the student.
So if a family were to say move to Everett and they were a foster care family going through or had an emergency placement? And they were trying to enroll a student through the family, the parent information center, but did not have the documentation? That would get referred up to you or would that go through, would they go to their caseworker to contact you?
Usually, Milan Fellison, who oversees the parent information center, she would call me. In between myself and Milan, we would make sure we either get ahold of the D C F worker or call the liaison in any other district to get the records that are necessary. But we have to still enroll the student immediately.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you so much.
Any other questions on Mr. Obremsky and the foster care policy? All right, seeing none, Mr. Obremsky?
Okay. Give me, can you people see that on the screen or no?
We can see the foster care policy.
Okay, hold on one second. You all set now on the homeless policy?
Yes.
Okay. So as you can see, the homeless policy that I sent home in your packet, I sent three different homeless policies to you, or Ms. Celestion did on Friday. We sent the present policy or the current policy that we presently have. I highlighted the changes, the, anything that's in light blue would be something that was deleted. Everything in yellow would be a change or something that was added. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to go over these right now.
Absolutely.
So the first part, obviously, at the top, I have to, we have to change my title. As you know, my title has changed from Assistant Superintendent of Business Affairs to Assistant Superintendent of Operations. That's one change that has to take place. That's in section one. If you go to section two, the definition of homelessness, we have to delete that, is in state care or custody and add children and youth to a living in. Bullet number six, we have to add a migratory policy. As amended, and those who qualify as homeless because they are living in circumstances as described above. Section five, we also have to change my title from Assistant Superintendent of Business Affairs to Assistant Superintendent of Operations. I'm just going to scroll down so the audience can see this at home. On section eight, we have to delete P A C testing. It's really just M C A S testing now. And we can remove the last note there at the bottom under access to comparable services. Because that was prior to us being in C E P. And now all of our students receive free breakfast and free lunch, so it's not necessary to have that as part of our policy. And the last part, unaccompanied youth and children and youth in state care or custody. That blue section can all be deleted. Because that would now come under foster care. The star programs now come under the foster care program. And unaccompanied youth or students in state care or custody can also be deleted. So that would, and that would change our policy. So that's why I gave you the three different versions to make it a little easier for you to understand the current policy. The policy highlighted with some changes or deletions and what the final policy would be. I don't know if anybody has any questions on this homeless policy? As amended.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Obremsky. It's not directly on the policy, but related to that. How many students do we have or we had that at least on the last school year who are considered homeless students?
Last school year, we had approximately a hundred and thirty homeless students. This year, we only, with the e-learning centers open, we've only been transporting two or three students so far, Mr. Marconi. But just as of last week, I probably have between D C F placements and homeless students now requesting to come back to in-person learning. I probably have seven or eight that we need to start setting up for when we go back to in-person learning.
And this number might grow once we return, right?
Yeah, that number might grow.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of clarification. If a student is homeless and is choosing to stay remote or choosing to participate in e-learning. Sorry.
Okay, I'm going to mute it. Please.
Sorry. If a student is homeless or in foster care and they're choosing to stay remote or in e-learning, they would still qualify for all of the same benefits. The P E B T card, et cetera, that their benefits don't change, just the transmission of their education, correct?
That is correct. We would still code them as homeless or still code them as foster care and they still get all the benefits that those students get.
Thank you very much. So the, so the conversation you were just having with Mr. Barrows was mainly about transporting those that chose to come back?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions of, Mr. Obremsky? Okay, seeing none. The matter is before you.
Yes.
Make, make a motion to accept the updated homeless policy and the Policy for Foster Care Education Assistant Act.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is made and seconded to move favorable actions, Clif and Lily, on these matters, which is the acceptance of the foster care policy and the acceptance of the amended homeless policy. Ms. Celestion, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Eighteen affirmative, you have accepted both policies. Thank you, Mr. Obremsky.
You're welcome.
Now, Superintendent, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrows?
I apologize and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind people at home that we still have that funding available for our homeless youth. Everett, actually Everett Public Schools is a pilot on that program. So it's a funding that is available for unaccompanied youth, eighteen plus. If they are homeless or in the risk of becoming homeless, the E P S has a funding that can assist them to place them in an apartment. So we pay, basically, we pay the rent for them. That fund is still available because we, because we are in remote learning, so not many students took advantage of that. So look for our parent information center, our guidance department at Everett High. If you know a student in that situation or if you are a student in that situation, because we can help. So just want to remind the public about that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Obremsky, if you could stop sharing your screen, we can move on to the next item, please. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. So item number four is the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget update. At this time, I would like to request a motion for the school committee to refer the matter to the budget committee of the whole. And at that meeting, we will present the budget for recommendation to the school committee.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to refer this matter to the budget committee on the whole. And I believe we do have a meeting on the twenty-ninth of March, which has been posted. So, Ms. Celestion, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Eighteen affirmative, we have referred this matter to the budget committee on the whole. Roman numeral number six, please.
Thank you. So Roman numeral six is items submitted by school committee members. We have one item, which is the Presentation on Community-Wide Initiative to Combat Period Poverty in Women's History Month Programming, sponsored by the E H S Club The Wave, and this was submitted by school committee member Samantha Lambert.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this was just for information for our, our community members and to call attention to some of the great work that Ms. Capra and Ms. Gill from Everett High School and their Feminine Empowerment Club is doing for Women's History Month. Ms. Gill is the art coordinator. And Ms. Capra is a health and women's self-defense educator. And I actually believe that we have Ms. Gill here, so if I could make a motion to invite her.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to invite Ms. Gill in front of us. If I could just have everybody just give me a thumbs up. Okay. Ms. Gill, it's good to see you. It's been a while.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I think my co-advisor, Ms. Capra, is also going to be joining as well. But yeah, we just wanted to highlight, thank you, Ms. Lambert, for inviting us here tonight. And thank you to the school committee and Superintendent to Hiliani. We, we started the Wave Club this year as a, as a brand new club, so we're only about a couple of months young. But we started this Women Empowerment Club after some passions that we had, that we just kind of really, really wanted to kind of take and run with. And so she is, as you guys know, the physical education teacher. She also does R A D certification, so she incorporates that into her classes. I'll let her talk a little bit more about that. And so we started this club. We, we realized there's, there's a need in our community for menstrual products and menstrual education. We know that, you know, some of our families struggle just to, just to have food to eat. So we thought this was an expensive thing that sometimes our girls at the high school and even the middle school levels don't have access to. So we wanted to provide them with that. As a result of not having some of these key products, they, when we're in person, miss school, miss participating in activities, miss going to work, taking care of their family, and also there's a huge stigma around a period, having periods anyway. So we wanted to kind of eliminate that stigma and not have them be shamed by that. But I want to invite Ms. Capra to talk a little bit about how we kind of started that, if you guys don't mind.
Okay, just a little thumbs and invite Ms. Capra. Okay, Ms. Capra, welcome.
Hi, everyone. How are you? Thank you for having me. Yes, I just am going to. Yes, I just am going to follow up with what Ms. Gill said really quickly. I started a RAD program at the high school about five years ago. And my program went from 20 girls to I think I have about 200 right now. And we've talked about a lot of issues that have to do with women. And every year, periods get brought up and they get stigmatized about everything. Girls are embarrassed. They don't want to ask for products. They don't want to leave class. They don't want to go to the nurse. I had a girl tell me this year that she got her period. She asked her dad to go get her some pads, and he brought her back diapers. So we have some education to do as well. So it's just kind of taking this away so that girls aren't embarrassed because this is normal. And I mean, it's the reason we're all here. So it's just kind of making it easier for our families to get these products because right now, times are just so hard. And for those that don't know, a box of tampons is about $9 and that lasts about, I would say like two months. But that's, I mean, if you don't have any money, that's a lot of money to be spending. And if people don't necessarily put, especially mothers, don't put themselves first. So I think that this is kind of where it started. And Ms. Gill is amazing and kind of, she's as crazy as I am with these ideas. And we went and just kind of ran with it. And it became this beautiful, beautiful project that we are very proud of. And we appreciate your support.
And if community members want to support you, what's the best way to do that?
Yeah, so we actually have an Amazon wishlist that we started, and we can send that along to you. I believe I sent Dave the information as well, so he has that access and can put it out there to however is best accessible to everybody. We started the Amazon wishlist, and we actually have a couple of donors that we'd like to also thank. The Family Resource Center has been huge. They actually submitted or donated a huge generous amount and look forward to partnering with us moving forward to make it sustainable for our girls. We know this drive is kind of for this month to get started. And then a gym north of Boston called CrossFit Route 1 has done their own sort of initiative to bring their own product in. There are about 367 kits worth of donations so far. And they're, you know, they're doing challenges to kind of amp up those donations. And that's spread to also three more gyms in Boston that we just found out about. So we're just super thankful for all the donations and the support. But we have that Amazon wishlist, so if you'd like to donate in that way, that's a really easy way. It just gets delivered right to us. And then we also have a donation box at Everett High School in the main office and also at City Hall, if that's easier, too.
Thank you so much. And then finally, I know you have a series of programs coming up as well as a contest. So, you know, if you want to highlight anything for our community, they'll be broadcast on YouTube Live, I believe, so available and accessible to everyone.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much. So for Women's History Month, actually, so we kicked off this project as our big kind of project for celebrating women. And next month, or sorry, next week, starting the 22nd, we'll have a series of events. Two of them will be at 3:00 PM, so Monday and Tuesday after school. We will have a TED Talk, I believe, Ms. Capra's We Should All Be Feminists, by a really wonderful author and speaker that will have all of them broadcast on YouTube Live. So that will be Monday at 3:00 PM. Tuesday at 3:00 PM will be a self-defense discussion. So Ms. Capra will lead that, and I'll kind of support her in that. Wednesday, we have a She Rose of the community. So we have some women in leadership in the community that will do a panel and have some of our members and students participate in that as well. Thursday, we have a Creative Jamboree. This is also Youth Arts Month, so we want to highlight youth arts and the way of celebrating women as well on Thursday. And that will be at 6:00 PM. And then Friday, we're having an extended network. We're calling it a Global Network Panel, Women's Panel, on Friday at 6:00 PM. So we encourage you all to join us, and we thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I have Ms. Cardello. And muted.
Millie, you're muted.
There's a issue with your microphone. So you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Can you try to put your volume up? Maybe try to log back in, Millie. Like log out and log back in. Let's try that.
Oh, you want to use the chat function real quick? So if I can, from Ms. Capra. RAD, what is that an acronym for?
Okay, so I hate answering this question because it's not actually my acronym. It's a program through the police. It's Rape Aggression Defense. And it seems very harsh. But it's a self-defense program for women that I went and was trained in to be a trainer through a police program. I actually took it in high school, and that's what gave me the idea to start the class and start this here at Everett High School.
Okay, thank you. I believe if we can give Ms. Cardello a moment, she's entering the chat function. There we go. Okay, thank you both for the amazing work you have done. This is to Ms. Gill and Ms. Capra. You've done and are doing. You have tamed the elephant in the room. So.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Okay, and any other for the questions of Ms. Gill and Ms. Capra? Now with that, I'll motion to excuse the customary thanks.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thumbs up.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You so much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so since there's no action, this is for information only. I'll entertain a motion to refer back to sponsor.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded to refer back to sponsor. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, seven in the affirmative for back to sponsor. Thank you for submitting that item tonight. Roman numeral seven, please.
Thank you. Roman numeral seven is the Subcommittee Report. We had three Subcommittee Meetings of the Committee on Finance and Negotiations. The dates were Tuesday, February 23rd, Monday, March 8th, and Thursday, March 11th, all at 6:30 PM.
Ms. Lambert, Mrs. Lambert?
Can we take these items collectively and accept the Subcommittee Report and place on file?
Yes, so my suggestion would be to accept these, to take these three items collectively, accept as written and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is made and seconded to take the three items collectively, accept as written and placed on file. So all we need is one vote for that. So if I could roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows, I'm sorry. Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next item of business, please. Superintendent Tigliani?
Sure. So Roman numeral eight is bills and payrolls.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,298,990.86.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,299,800.
200. My apologies, 209,000.
Okay, so the motion is made and seconded to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,299,890.86. Roll call vote, please, to approve.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, you approved bills and payrolls. Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,298,990.86.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,298,990.86. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Celestin?
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, you have voted fairly to pay bills and payrolls.